Are we good to go, Katie, you think? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our monthly community conversation. I'm John Kofalas, County Commissioner from District One. Wanted to mention that I'm really happy and pleased to be joined by Katie from the Public Health Department who will be hosting the meeting. I will turn it over to her in a moment. I'm also really pleased that we have my two fellow commissioners, Kristin and Jody. And in a moment, they'll have an ample opportunity to introduce themselves and share whatever comments they wish to share. And then we have our county assessor, Mr. Bob Overbeck, and someone from his staff. Very quickly, the proposed agenda for this morning is that in a moment, Katie can give us a quick update on how to do this Zoom platform thing so folks can fully engage. And then I'd like to turn it over to my two fellow commissioners, Kristin Stevens and Jody Shadak McNally, to introduce themselves and share whatever you folks want to share. And then we'll go to the county assessor, who will provide us with information about the Cameron Peak Fire Damage Assessment Report, which has been very informative, and it'll show the hard work that these folks have been doing. And then the last item before we open it up is I will attempt to provide a high-level overview of some of the key areas that we want to address as a county in 2021. And a bunch of this has come out of meetings that we've had this past week, our Commissioners Retreat. We also had a joint work session with the Planning Commission on the land use code stuff. So that's essentially the format or the agenda. I probably have packed too much in there. Also, I'm mindful that at 10:00 a.m., I think 10 to 11:00, our three Fort Collins-based state legislators have a town hall meeting scheduled. And in case folks want to transition to that, our goal will be to try to end at least a few minutes before 10:00 a.m. so people can plug into that. So I hope that's acceptable to folks. I appreciate you all being here. I hope you're staying warm. I hope everyone is staying warm in our community. And I'll turn it over to Katie O'Donnell, who can give us a quick explanation of how to, once again, use the infamous Zoom platform.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us today. Just a few reminders. We have a Q and A option, so you can type your questions in as we go, and we'll get to them as we have some breaks to answer questions. Or you can raise your hand, and we'll, again, wait for that break, but move you and let you unmute and ask your question. So there's two ways you can engage, and we'll keep an eye on that throughout this community conversation. And we'll just try to keep us moving along. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much, Katie. At this time, I'd like to welcome my two fellow commissioners, Kristin Stevens and Jody Shadak McNally. I guess we'll go in, I suppose we'll go in numerical order. Kristin, please share whatever you'd like to share. I'm really glad that you guys have asked to participate in this particular community outreach event.
Well, thank you, John, and thanks for inviting us. My name's Kristin Stevens, and some people in the audience may know me. I've served on the Fort Collins City Council for almost six years and got sworn in about a month ago, along with Jody. We've been really busy. We've had a lot of work sessions to kind of get up to speed about what the county's doing. We've had liaisons to quite a few boards. We're keeping an eye on what's going on at the State House as far as legislation. We're digging into some issues in the community. We're looking at Phase Two of the land use code and what revisions we want to make there. So we've been quite busy for the past month. And I think John will go into some more detail about what we've done in just the past week, but excited to do this work. And for me, there's some issues that are really interesting for me to dig into, our childcare and housing, but also really interested in this land use code revision. So I look forward to doing the work, and I won't take up too much time because we have a lot of guests today. So thank you, John.
Thank you, Kristin. Jody, you're on.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Commissioner Kofalas, for inviting us to join you this morning. I'm very excited to be here with my fellow commissioners, and I'm very honored to be serving as the Laramie County Commissioner for District Three, earning the trust of the voters. And I'm the first woman to ever serve in this seat for District Three, and I'm very excited to have that honor. Kristin and John have been correct. We have been very busy. I've been joking around, there is no honeymoon with this job, and that's okay. We ran for this to get right to work, and I don't think I've taken a day off. There's something going on every day. We've been in meetings. Commissioner Kofalas and I joined the Loveland Legislative Session Thursday, and we had several state senators and state reps and city council. We had a great conversation about some of our priorities, and I'm sure Commissioner Kofalas could have talked about that. I had a couple. My first community conversation in Loveland with Mayor Jackie Marsh that went very well. And I've been up to Estes, meeting with the mayor. Actually, I brought the mayor of Loveland and Mayor of Estes together, and we had a great meeting in Estes. And I've been doing a lot of constituent calls. And behind me is Rocky Mountain National Park, Lily Lake. I love to hike in Rocky. And so looking at our trails and protecting our natural resources along with childcare and housing and clean air and water and helping us recover from the pandemic and the wildfires and protecting our watersheds are all priorities, I think, for all three of us. And this is a historic time in our county, and I'm very proud to serve along these two great commissioners. And I think we're going to be able to get a lot done along with our friend and colleague Assessor Overbeck, and I'm glad to see him here today. And Katie, shout out to you. Thanks again for doing a phenomenal job explaining the vaccines and stuff. And you are my hero, all the work that you've been doing. So I just wanted to give a shout out to you. So thanks.
Thank you, Jody. And Catherine, before we turn it over to the county assessor, would you be kind enough to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Good morning. My name is Catherine Fallon, and I recently joined the Laramie County Assessor's Office, and I am Assessor Bob Overbeck's Executive Assistant.
Thank you very much. Bob, you are definitely on now.
All right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Kofalas, and good morning, everyone. And good morning, Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Shadak McNally. And again, Catherine, thank you for working on a Saturday for us. We appreciate it. Well, I have a brief overview of the Assessor's Damage Assessment Report. It is sort of the first of its kind, and it really ties down to House Bill 14-1001, which I'll get into, which was passed in 2014 that allowed those property owners who unfortunately had a 100% loss of destruction or structure loss to their property during a natural disaster to get a tax credit. And I thought it deserved a summary and report, and also to highlight what goes on behind the scenes when there is a natural disaster and how the county and the Assessor's Department interact before, during, and after a major event like this. So with that said, Catherine has a slide presentation to put up here. And if you can do that, Catherine, we can move on to the next part of this. And then we'll go. So here are the numbers at a glance when we filed the report. Most people recognize when the Cameron Peak Fire began in August, early August, and then it went to December. It burned nearly 209,000 acres and was 100% contained on December 2. When the fire is occurring, we get reports from the EOC and emergency services that we may have to go inspect areas. And so when we go out into the field, we have to document damage or destroyed property on land. And those numbers that you see up there, that 469 is what the county has discovered as being damaged and destroyed. But that 243 number, those are structures that were on the county records that were 100% destroyed. So that difference of about 240 are about structures, barns, garages, cabins. I really don't know, because they were burnt to the ground, that were not on county record. And why did that happen? It may have happened because in the '60s and '70s, people built up there, then pulled a permit. For whatever reason, the county was unable to document those structures being on record. So it's likely that they never received a tax bill because we didn't know about it. But the 243 were known structures, and those 243 structures that were unfortunately destroyed to this fire event were part of getting a reimbursement as House Bill 14-1001 dictated. This office, the Assessor's Office, and it's not the county. This is just our little office. We put in 1,200 hours of office work. This is the planning, the morning briefings that we have, morning, afternoon, and in the evening, that is actually going out into the field, inspecting some of these parcels, recording and documenting what happened on that parcel. And if you look below that 1,200 office hours we have spent, the first date of destruction was September 6. You know, we were so fortunate for a month that the fire was being contained for so long until the winds picked up. And then we've really had a major firestorm that started on September 6 die down and kept roaring up. And so the last date was November 2 as a structure's being destroyed. On the right, you'll see some photographs. This is what it looks like when your assessor goes out in the field and his team on this particular day that I was going out. On the top there, I saw this lost dog wandering around. And if you look below that picture where that dog is, there is an ATV. That was only a few hundred yards from where this dog was standing, ironically. And there is nothing left on that ATV except metal. Everything was disintegrated. That's how hot that fire was. But interesting enough, if you look at that tree where that dog is standing next to, it is still standing. And so it just kind of shows how interesting the fire moves because the ground was definitely burned underneath the dog's paws. And again, the lower picture is when we come up to a site. It's very sad that we see somebodies who built their dreams destroyed. And so these are the pictures that we document, and then we go into the office, and then we process it, and then we do our calculations for valuations. Because when you lose a structure due to a natural disaster such as a fire, that improvement value or that structure is removed from the tax roll. You are no longer liable for paying taxes the date of destruction for that property. Land still has a value, but because that building was lost, there's no longer a value there. And so the assessor removes that value for the purposes of property taxation. So we'll make that clear for you. The assessment date is January 1. It's a very important date for assessors and all across the state. The total improvement value of those 243 structures that were lost was $27 million. That is what the assessor knows. Now, that doesn't include the furniture, the cars, the baby grand piano, if there was one. That is just the bricks, the mortar, the sticks that make the house. Below that, I have a calculation in the market value of $6 million. That is what was used for the, that was still on record from the destruction date to the end of the year. So there were $6 million on average from the date of destruction to the end of the year. And that $6 million was used as a loss to the county. And then Catherine, if you can just click, we'll highlight that report. I do have a report online. If you go to the Assessor's webpage, we have a little bit of a highlight of the news, various links you can click, and sums up some of the, what happens here. If you click on, this is the official report. Again, it's on the Assessor's webpage, and there's some summary in it, which I'm actually giving you guys just sort of a high level of the summary here right now this morning. Next slide, please, Catherine. We break these down by structure type just to make this very, very simple. There were, of those 243 structures that were on record loss, unfortunately, there were 184 residential or cabins lost. There were 18 farm utility buildings, 17 sheds. There are residential mobile homes were eight, five detached garages, four barns, five equipment buildings and storages, sheds, and one nursery greenhouse and one stable. And those were all on the Assessor's records. And so they all had a value, and we calculate it, and that's where you see that $6 million number. And then the assessed value is what the assessors use when they use the assessment rate for conversion. Again, the photograph is what it looks like when we're out in the field. We put on the gear, the nomex gear, so we don't get, if there is a fire, that our clothes don't catch on fire. So it's required that we go out into the field, and we look like a firefighter. We have to wear helmets. We have a radio that we can connect to with emergency services because sometimes that fire is moving around you in mysterious ways. But we have spotters. And this is very, very important at the team event, that when the Assessor's Office goes out, we are teamed up with the Building Department. The Building Department also needs to record what's going on. And then who leads us into these hazardous areas is the emergency service personnel or the sheriff's office. And they collaborate together, and they have spotters. So while we're out in the field, after the fire hits, sometimes these trees get loose, and they call them widowmakers, and they can fall on you. Or when you're driving through these areas, sometimes you have to have cutters, and they have to go out with these chainsaws, cut the logs, break them apart so you can move back and forth in some of these areas and the sometimes challenging terrain. So very much of a hazardous situation. We have to wear a mask because there's just a lot of stuff in the air. You have to be careful because you could fall into a septic tank or a hole, cut yourself. There's all kinds of conditions when the area is not stable to go in. So we're going in maybe a few days after the fire event, and you can still see smoke coming from the ground or from the ashes. This is when you drive through. The second picture is just when you drive through, you see a lot of hoses for structured defense that the fire departments have put out there. And then the bottom picture is, we actually trained for all this. This is a collaboration between the Laramie County Building Department and the Assessor staff. Again, we go out as a team, and we did a sort of a mock situation in Old Town. So when we use the iPad, the collector, that we can log this data into the system. We don't use paper anymore. They used to use paper. So now it's pretty much seamless that the data is entered into an iPad and then shortly after uploaded into our systems for us to do our work. Next slide, please. A couple of other highlights. You know, we planned for these events. In 2019, I had reached out to the Arapahoe County Assessor and asked if he'd be interested in working with an IGA agreement with Laramie County. The reason for that is that there was a lot of lessons learned from the Hyde Park Fire, is that when you're out in the field, and if you don't get your information back in time to FEMA, it could disqualify you for getting any reimbursements. So that was communicated to me from Lori Hodges, the EOC manager. And so in 2019, I found a partner. And in 2020, the agreement was finally completed between Arapahoe County and Laramie County. And I want to thank Commissioner Kofalas for supporting this. We are actually having more resources and to be prepared. If the fire event was so significant that it hit 100 or 1,000 structures that we would have to call upon Arapahoe County so we could cover and get everything done in a timely manner. We did meet with Estes Park about a few weeks before the East Troublesome Fire took off from Grand County. I had talked to the administrators because I no longer work with the County Building Department when we're in the rural area, when we're in the city. So I have to work with the Estes Park Building Department if a fire event or a natural disaster hits that particular community, which I'm glad to say didn't. But just a lot of kudos to the town administration and the community of Estes Park for getting some planning done just in case. Again, always collaboration and coordination with so many partners, the EOC, the Building Department, the incident management teams. You know, you heard they would come in every two weeks, manage these fires, and then they go out, and then another team would come in. And they would contact the Assessor's Office and ask us, you know, who owns this parcel or who owns this property? So they could do some work on there and get permission from the property owner. We collaborate with the Sheriff's Department and so many others that, there's just so many other partners here that I couldn't even name them all. But the community should be very grateful for how many partners engaged in this fire to make sure that everybody was safe, that they were sheltered during this event, that they were fed, that their animals were taken care of and fed. And fortunately, I don't believe that we had one life loss in this fire event. So while a lot of challenging difficulty, there is a bright spot to all this. Again, the Assessor's Office, when we do our work, we have to do appraisal review from the natural disaster to the loss of structure. There's valuation, there's some data management. We train the staff. We have GIS, which is the mapping support that we use, and we communicate with the incident management team. And when the fire started kicking up, people started calling. It was all hands on deck. So my office actually was operated as a call center to support some of the county operations. Next slide, please, Catherine. Again, safety first. We actually are planning to do more trainings and make sure that our teams are well-prepared for new appraisers or new building department personnel. So we're collaborating with other, perhaps with the City of Fort Collins we're in conversations with, with PHA. So we have some training because there really wasn't any formal training for this. You basically gave somebody your gear, your iPad, and then you go. Health and safety protocols are always very important. Safety first during this pandemic. How did we manage it? Everybody went out into the field with windows down and masks on. And I'm happy to say that we were able to successfully go out many, many times to do what we have to do, which isn't the most happiest thing, but required that nobody came down with COVID. And again, I just, you know, a lot of elected officials here in the state from the governor's office and our federal leaders. And I just want to note Congressman Nagus' interest in beginning a caucus for wildfire for the Western states. And I believe that is something that he is working on and also help for some disaster relief. This picture here is me working with a community member. We go out and have what we call a DAC, a Damage Assistance Center. And we would go out there, and if anybody impacted from the fire, there are all kinds of services that would support people impacted from the fire and from going through the ashes and finding lost photos or heirlooms to just helping you begin the recovery process. So that will conclude my presentation. Thank you all for allowing me to present, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Well done. This is an opportunity to ask questions of the county assessor regarding the Cameron Peak Fire Damage Assessment Report. Are there any questions? I see something in the Q and A. And again, folks can raise their hand if they're connected through the computer. They can submit something through the Q and A or the chat, I believe. And then by telephone, is that the star nine thing, Katie? Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I don't see any questions. But again, people may have some follow-up questions. I'm always available. Feel free. You can get the information online. You can also give me a call on the phone at the Assessor's Office, and we'd be happy to follow up with you. Just one last thing, one news flash here, is that there will be an adjustment for the burn area that the assessor that I'm doing coming up for the May 1 Notice of Value. So we realized the fire occurred in 2020. Again, January 1 is the assessment date, so we take a picture in time, essentially. And so everybody within that burn area, inside the burn area, will be seeing an adjustment because of the possible lost value of the property and the homes due to this natural disaster. We haven't come up with a number yet, but we are reviewing the data so we can make a fair and equitable adjustment and respond to those impacted in the community there. Again, thank you very much, and have a great Laramie County day, and have a good day, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Catherine. And before we transition to the next item on our agenda, I wanted to share a couple of things really quickly. One is that Elaine posted the Zoom link for the 10:00 a.m. town hall meeting with Senator Genow and our two state representatives from Fort Collins, Kip and Orange. So that Zoom link is in the Q and A. Secondly, I wanted to mention the reference to Congressman Nagus' and this bipartisan caucus that he established regarding wildfires. There's an upcoming, I think I have the link somewhere, but on Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday, the 18th, there is a half-day wildfire summit that is being convened. And folks might want to look into that, or somebody who's better at navigating Zoom could try to find that link. But that will be coming up on Wednesday, and they have a whole series of workshops and presentations. And I think it's a collaborative effort of a variety of our federal legislators. And finally, I just wanted to share a real personal story about an encounter that I had with a, I guess it's referred to as a widowmaker tree. Years ago, I was on a backpacking trip in southeastern Utah in the Dark Canyon Primitive Area. And I was with my friend, and we had backpacked in, and we were camping in an area that had been a burn area. And my friend camp set up his tent and slept in the tent. I decided to sleep out under the stars. And during the night, one of those trees fell very close to me, and all I got was all the branches shattering on top of me. So that's an example where we have to be really, really careful, you know, especially if we're camping or hiking or trying to clean up in areas where these trees have been burned. Just thought you'd like to know that that wasn't my time. So that's why I'm here with you today. Isn't that exciting? All righty. Okay.
Commissioner Kofalas, before we let the Assessor's Office go, we had a question about who is in charge of water quality issues in relation to the fire. Do you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
Thank you, Katie. I think I would defer to you because you're with the Public Health Department, and there's a lot of work being done on water quality issues and preparing for spring runoff and that sort of thing. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, of course. So as Commissioner Kofalas mentioned, the public health side gets involved in water quality and recovery. So we've been partnering on the assessment side of some of this, going out and viewing the septic tanks that might have had damage, that sort of thing. But public health takes lead on some of the water quality issues we'll see with runoff as spring rains come. And so we're in the planning phase and working with the community just to figure out where we're going to land on some of that assessment piece. But definitely, public health is front and center in the water quality side.
Thank you, Katie. Yes, Kristin, please.
Yeah, I also wanted to say that, too, you know, I think that the City of Greeley is taking a big lead on what's happening on the Pooter, along with the City of Fort Collins on some water quality issues as well. And then some stream debris removal. It looks like that we might be doing as a county. So there's kind of, I think, a lot of people working on, including like the Watershed Coalition groups, which will be working in tandem with the city. So I think there are a lot of people that I know of that are working on water quality issues.
Thanks, Kristin. And I'm noticing also in the Q and A, there's been a little bit of discussion about the link to the 10:00 a.m. meeting. And hopefully, that's showing up for folks so that if they want to participate in the state legislator town hall. Also, thanks to Kevin Jones from the Fort Collins Chamber. He posted the link to the upcoming wildfire summit. Hopefully, folks are seeing it unless we need to put these things in the chat or something. But I appreciate that.
You're on mute, John.
Darn. We'll move on to the next agenda item. I will attempt to give a high level overview of some of the key issues. And then of course, I will respond to questions and have some dialogue. And of course, Kristen and Jody, feel free to respond to, you know, participate as fully as you'd like. We're all in this together. So a couple of things that I already mentioned a little bit, but on, on Wednesday night, we had a joint work session with the planning commission. So once, once a month, we have a work session with the planning commission. And the overall topic was the, looking at the objectives for completing Phase Two of our land use code update. And, and we had some, a lot of good public participation. I think there are over 40 or more people attendees listening in. And one of the things that generated that interest, of course, that is the oil and gas regulations. Folks might remember that last April, April 6th, to be precise, we adopted the Laramo County Oil and Gas Regulations. And prior to that, we didn't have any oil and gas regulations. So that is one of the areas that is a high priority in 2021 to update the Phase Two of the land use code, which includes things like the oil and gas regulations in the next few months, which includes things like updating our, our sign code and also things related to diversity of housing options, development standards, a lot of important things. So we encourage folks to engage in that and there will, if you go to the various websites, you know, we're continually improving, you know, how we're going to create opportunities for folks to participate. So I did want to mention that. And again, if people have more questions, they can certainly ask more details. And we have three commissioners here and one county assessor and one public health person who could respond to those questions. The second thing I, I'd like to mention is that we also had our, our first ever together, the three of us, what we call a board retreat. And, and it's to look at, again, what are some of the priorities? What are some of the, the overall, the three commissioners, our work plan, our collaborative work plan? And then individual commissioners, what are some priorities for them? And, and so there were some good outcomes from that meeting. But one of the things I wish to highlight is something that I've been working on and that, that the three of us have embraced. And that is this climate smart Laramo County Framework Initiative. We, we've kind of gone through the first phase and developing a report that provides recommendations and ideas and opportunities for the community to engage. We have an executive summary document that we're going to finalize. And, and then we're going to be undertaking a, a community engagement process. And then from that feedback, ultimately the goal is to develop some kind of a climate smart Laramo County Framework Action Plan. So that was, that's another thing that's going to, I believe is a high priority for the three commissioners, you know, for 2021. The last thing I'll mention is the strategic plan. Folks might remember that it started, you know, between 2013 and 2018. But this idea of the commissioners developing a five year strategic plan. And for example, one of the outcomes of the previous five year strategic plan was success with the voters passing the behavioral health initiative, you know, in 2018, which allowed for some of the work we're doing on the behavioral health side. And ultimately for the, the building, the beginning of the construction of the behavioral health facility. In the 2019, 2023 strategic plan, there are three overarching goals. We could get into that. I'm the executive sponsor of goal number two and as, which basically deals with four objectives. And then I believe Kristen, you're the, you're the executive sponsor for goal number one. Is that correct?
No, I'm goal number three, I think.
I get those backwards.
Jody is number one.
Yeah, so Jody, Jody is the executive sponsor for goal number one, which, and she can get into this, which deals with infrastructure related issues. Goal number two deals with economic opportunity issues related to everything from, and we're working closely with the health department on the, the, developing a tool for looking at issues related to community health, wellbeing and resiliency. And we're in the process of, of developing that tool and developing the metrics because we have specific objectives, you know, in terms of what we want to achieve. The second item deals with workforce development in goal number two, especially people with disabilities. And what is the county's role in it, in helping folks to access more meaningful work? Third item is childcare and, and the fourth item is affordable housing. One thing I'll mention on the affordable housing side is that currently there is a, a survey that's out there and I'm hoping somebody can provide that link. But we are, we really want to get resident community input during the month of February on this affordable housing survey. So if you're not, if you've not heard of it, it's been advertised in the newspapers and other sources. It's gone out through the various networks. That would be really, a really helpful and important way to engage, giving us input. And, and that will help inform an analysis, a needs analysis that we, that is being done. As we've been working on this for the last few months with a group out of Denver, Root Policy Research Group. And they will be providing us a report, I think in the first quarter of 2021. So hopefully March, April, that incorporates the input we've received from the survey, plus all the, all the work that, you know, that they've done. And, and that will help inform further, you know, what, where the county should be engaging on housing, certainly on childcare issues and some of these other issues. So the strategic plan advancing that is really, really, really important for 2021. And then I'll just mention community outreach. We also agreed, the three of us, that we want to have a coordinated, you know, comprehensive, effective way to, you know, stay connected with the community. And certainly doing that through the lens of diversity, equity and inclusion. And, and so this is one example where my fellow commissioners, you know, are participating in this. The goal is to participate in each other's community conversations and figure out what else we need to do to, to stay connected with the community. I will stop there and see if there are any questions and then let, you know, you guys, Jody and Kristen, whatever you want to add to that as far as your, your goals or anything else. Is there, oh, I see that Jody, Commissioner Shattuck McNally has posted the, the link to the website, the county website that also provides the link to the, the affordable housing survey. Thank you. Are there any, Katie, are there any questions at this point about anything I've shared?
Nope, and I think the link is also posted as a question and I'll respond to that so everybody can see that answer as well in the Q and A.
Great. Great, thank you. Kristen, please.
Yeah, I think it wouldn't be bad because you talked about the oil and, both the oil and gas and the, seems like there were some other questionnaires out there that we wouldn't mind some input in. So I know one was oil and gas. And now for the life of me, I'm trying to think of what the second one was, but it was something to do with land use code. I think it was a sign code, was it?
Yeah.
Which maybe people are, you know, sign code is not necessarily something that people are normally engaged in. But if you do have comments about, I mean, I will say with the sign code, th- these are issues like the size of signs and billboards and lit billboards and, you know, electronic billboards. And so, you know, it does go to some community livability issues and aesthetics in our community. And so you may think you don't have as much interest in signs. And then hearing some of those issues, you might have more, you know, do you, do you want those flashing billboards on the highway? Do you, you know, where, do you want them at all? I mean, so I think that there's, we can probably provide those links too. And I'm sorry to look at Jody, she's so on top of the links. But I think that, you know, if people do have comments on oil and gas and the sign code, we, we would love to hear those before we kind of dig into that work.
Thanks, Kristen. Jody, did you want to add anything about the, the link that you just provided? And also I think with the sign code thing, my understanding is that the input for that, that survey's been out and that may close soon. But with the oil and gas survey, which I think you can access off the, the land use code, a planning site. I believe that is open till through the month, through the month of February. But Jody, did I get that right in?
Um, I'm not sure which, if you got that, which one you're asking if you got it right, John. I just posted in, I'm looking for the sign use code survey real quick, but that is the code for the oil and gas regulations, I believe. And you are correct, we all attended that meeting and I think we had a work session. We'll have another work session this week on the oil and gas codes. I, I don't know, remember Commissioner, if you shared this morning that because of state statute, the state in November, I believe, updated their, their land use, their land use codes for the oil and gas regulations for the whole state. And by statute of SB 181, we're required as a county to meet those minimum standards. So we have to definitely meet and update those standards to the base of the state. However, I think I can say, because we've said this in the last couple of meetings, that as, as those three of us as commissioners are looking to explore where we can go, maybe above and beyond, especially for the unique nature of Laramo County and see where we can do what we can to protect the safety, health and welfare of the residents and protect our clean air and water and soil. And so we'll be taking that next step with the surveys and this public input. And I think I'll look for that public input screen too, to try to butt in there. But if may I can share, show, share screen or something, but it's, I'll look at that sign we use code. And with the goal number one, I just wanted to share with everybody that is the infrastructure, but also has broadband and some other areas in, in it that as a board, we decided in our retreat on Wednesday, that some of those are going to be kind of as a board, some goals and focus going forward because a lot of this was kind of put on hold in 2020. And we had some staff members reshuffle and we have, even though we're the gold stewards, we have a lot of staff that kind of do this as an extra part of their job. They go above and beyond and take on some of these objectives as, as the people that are focusing and helping us as goal stewards. And so there's a change with the rural broadband and also with the infrastructure. And we have to really address and look at that. One thing with that, which kind of I think overlaps with Commissioner Stevens' goal and strategic plan objective is two weeks ago, we approved as a board, a work, remote work stipend. And so that helps us as a county, we, we gave up some leased space because we are out of some space for the employees and having that, and having a lot of them work from home because we try to be safe in our workspace with COVID. So a lot of people have been working remotely. So it was assessed that there were several employees who could work from home. So we created this stipend for 115 employees by giving up that lease space that saves us that money to provide that stipend. And it's $1,200 initially for them to be able to set up safe and effective workspaces at home. Let's say they need a very comfortable, safe chair because they're in their chair all day. Or they need to have the, a good work table that can look up and down or whatever they need to make sure that they can work remotely. And so we approved that as kind of, I think it's kind of unusual or rare for the whole state of Colorado, we're kind of leading the way on that. And so those employees won't have a permanent workspace anymore in the county, which kind of takes some of that pressure off of, of the space that we need to have for workers. And so we're evaluating that and going forward and seeing how that will work. And we want to make sure it's a good cost savings for the county. But also this might be a good work solution for a lot of these of our employees when we try to take care of them as well, making sure that they're well taken care of and do their jobs effectively and have a good, healthy work environment and life balance. So that's one thing that kind of is, I think overlapping with my strategic goal and Kristen's because they're kind of overlapping, but we did approve that and I wanted to share that because that is kind of unusual, unusual and unique to our county. And we will be kind of re-energizing and re-looking at the infrastructure goals and looking at how that, how we're going to kind of restart that conversation as a regional convenor, as a county with our municipalities. Because not, I don't believe the county or I don't think anyone in this, in this region thinks that one entity can solve our infrastructure goals with roads and multimodal, we have to work together as a region. And the other part of that is the broadband, which we're going to, which has been ongoing. That theme is everywhere, somewhere in Laramo County, want to make sure that people have access to, you know, broadband, internet access. And that's also a diversity, equity and inclusion issue as well, that we want to make sure that we're getting that out to areas that are underserved. So that's just a little bit I'd like to share. I'm sure we'll have a lot more. And then again, I kind of took on a personal goal of looking at, we're seeing levels for 2050 on our trails and a lot of them are new users. So in a lot of, I ask everyone, if you're out there hiking, if you have dogs and you leave your little doo doo bags on the side of the trail, to please pick them up and take them back with you and appropriately dispose of them in the waste. We had, we've had a lot of issues with that on the trails. One ranger picked up 47 bags in one day. And I hike a lot and I hike a lot of county trails as well as Rocky behind me. And one day I took a couple of new folks to explore the backbone. And of course, we were safely socially distanced and wearing our mask and all that, but we picked up four or five bags ourselves. So, so I'm going to be looking at that as a personal goal going forward as, through the county to kind of look at our, the strains and uses of our county system that way. So thanks, Commissioner, for letting me share all of that.
Of course, and before, if Kristen wants to enlighten us, but I, I did want to respond to, I think there was a question or a comment in the Q and A about the links. And what I can say is that after we end and this, this chat thing goes away or this Zoom thing, if you, for the sign code survey and the oil and gas survey, if you go to laramor.org backslash planning, you'll see the various links in there and you should be able to find the oil and gas regulations survey, which will be live through the end of the month, through March 1st, I believe. And then I think the sign code survey is in there as well. So that would be one way for folks to access that. With, with that said, Kristen, is there anything you'd like to say at the?
Um, well, with regard to, you know, what I'm looking at with the strategic plan. So I have goal number three and that's about services that we provide to the community. So like Jody said, we each shepherd kind of one, one of these goals. And so, so mine in, in many ways is internal focused. How do we take care of our workforce to, to give you as, as a community better service? And so, you know, we're, we're looking at things like, you know, what kind of skills do we need in our, in our, in a future workforce with regards to diversity and adaptability? We're looking, we're, we link into some of the, the climate smart issues when we're saying, how do, how are we responsible stewards in our workplace? So how do we set the example for others to show that, you know, we're, we're adopting these environmental policies as, as a work, as an employer? And so I think that that's really important for us to do it because it's really easy for us to say, you should, as, as county residents, you know, adopt all these plans when we haven't ourselves adopted them. So that's, that's really important to me. We're also looking at space because we want to use tax dollars efficiently. So we, if we have solutions and workarounds, that mean we don't have to create, you know, build a new building that we don't have to, you know, tap into tax dollars to, to renovate a building that we can, that we're looking at new ways to accommodate our workforce. So for example, you know, with COVID, while it's been a big stressor on our community, it's also taught us a lot about what remote work looks like and how we can accomplish some work from home. And that that may be even preferable to some of our employees. So looking at those kind of issues are, you know, are really important. And, and it may, you know, put off or eliminate some of the capital costs we have, some of the bigger costs that we have around building buildings. So I think that that's really important. So it's kind of, in, in many ways, it's sort of what does the future of our services look like? And what, how can we help and work with the, the staff that we have now and the staff we will have in the future? And so it's pretty exciting work for, for me. I, I think it's, you know, I think that everybody's kind of re-looking at things these days. And so we, just so you know, as an employer, we're doing that. And then as, as setting an example for other employers. And one of the exciting things that came out of it is we will be exploring childcare for our own employees. And that's really, that's really exciting because first of all, I do think it's, that's an example, excuse me, for larger employers to say, maybe this is feasible, maybe we can look at this as well. And it also, if, you know, if we are able to do this, we'll, we'll pull. And it also, if, you know, if we are able to do this, we'll, we'll pull, we'll free up some spaces in existing childcare for other, for other employees. And we know that childcare is such an issue. So that's, that's kind of the work that I'm doing around my, my goals and objectives. And I'm very excited to do the work. But if you do have input on how we can deliver county services better, I would love to hear that and implement that as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Jody and Kristen. Well said. Katie, are there any questions? Okay. Let me just, if I may, I'd just like to provide it, just a couple of tangible examples of where, where you know, we're making progress on some of these, these things that we've just shared with you. And, and again, folks, please feel free to ask questions. Share your thoughts on the things we've touched on, including the Cameron Peak Fire Damage Assessment Report information or anything else that is of important, of importance to you. But by way of examples, I, I would offer one related to the broadband, the Strategic Broadband Initiative, you know, which, and we started that process you know, a number of years ago. And, and an example of progress that we've made there is we were able to invest, I believe it was $100,000 of federal dollars, COVID-19 related dollars to provide for a project to allow for access from a particular mobile home park, Cloverleaf Mobile Home Park, that we are, are our mapping determined that that was an area that was under, underserved in terms of access to broadband or high-speed internet. So in collaboration with a private sector provider, Front Range Internet, the county was able to work on establishing some of the hardware that needs to go to connect with some, a tower that's up in the northeast part of the county. And ultimately that is helping to provide internet service that helps the individuals there in terms of their work responsibilities and in terms of students who have to learn virtually. So that's an example of a public-private sector collaboration. And I think it's really cool. And it's not just for Cloverleaf, Cloverleaf. And actually, we've also worked with Front Range to provide a tiered structure in terms of cost sharing. So as far as the cost of subscribing to this, to this internet service, which will help those families and those kids and so forth, there is a tiered structure in terms of some of the cost of, of subscribing would be subsidized frankly by Front Range Internet. So that is one example that I think is important for folks to know. And even in other parts of the county, within range of this, this tower that is able to connect with technology on the ground, you know, there are opportunities to get better access, especially in the, in the, in the northern part of the county, northeastern part of the county, you know, where there still are, is, you know, folks are being underserved. A, a second example I'd like to offer in the realm of affordable housing. And, and I think we're making a lot of progress there. And, you know, I mean, I think the overall goal is what is the, the role of the county in terms of dollars, in terms of, you know, strategic partnerships and that kind of thing. But the tangible examples I would offer there, well, that come to mind, one is, you know, one of the things that we've done with our affordable housing objective within that goal number two strategic plan is we've updated what's called our private activity bonds. So a private activity bond policy. So private activity bonds are tax exempt bonds that the state of Colorado receives from the feds based on a population formula. So those, those, the dollar amounts are allocated to counties and whatnot. Last year, I think our allocation was about five plus billion dollars. But working with Housing Catalyst, you know, the Fort Collins Housing Authority, we, 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 we get those, those, that allocation. And then because we're not necessarily in the, is the business of building housing, we will work with partners to allocate those private activity bonds. And so a certain amount of money went to Housing Catalyst. And, and that is helping to facilitate the affordable housing development, the, it's called Spark. It is called Spark and it's, it is the one in downtown, in downtown Fort Collins. The partnering with the Fort Collins DDA as well as Housing Catalyst. And that will take place at 140 East Oak. And the groundbreaking for that at this point is scheduled for May. And it will result in 74, I believe it's 74 apartments that will serve the needs of folks from 30% of the area median income, I believe on up to 80%. There is an example where the, I think the county is, is trying to be a good, a good partner. Another example of how we've used our private activity bond allocation is we issued some of that to Mercy Housing. Mercy Housing is based out of Denver. They, they have a long track record of doing affordable housing throughout the country and throughout the state. And, and in this case, the, the, our allocation helps other types of financing tools, just like the other project, low-income housing tax credits, et cetera. But there's, you may have read recently, there's a, a housing project that's going to, I think it's called North Fields or something, which is, thank you, Kristen. It's, it's a housing development that will take place north of Vine Drive, west of LeMay. And, and it will, you know, it will result in different kinds of housing. But then because it's in a metro district and because of the good work that folks like Kristen Stevens and her, when she was on city council did, you know, one of the requirements of approving a metro district, there has to be a public good. And Kristen, you can let me know if I didn't get this all right. But a public good, in this case, there's a either a requirement or an incentive that you have to provide a certain amount of affordable housing. So our private activity bond allocation was issued to Mercy Housing. And, and that's helping get the financing. And part of that overall housing project will include, I forget how many apartments, but in the sixties, you know, rental apartments, you know, for folks to address some of our affordable housing. So I offer those as examples and I'll, I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, I think it was 15% of it. We were, you were always aiming for 15 to 20% of the units in, in a metro district to be affordable. So that was one of the public goods that we, we had always looked for. You know, I, I know people have difficult difficulties with metro districts. And that's, you know, for, for us as a city council, it was one of the things, well, if we would approve that, I mean, otherwise, frankly, I mean, that land would have been developed anyway, and there would have been no affordable housing component. So it's a great location, it's on bus routes. So, so, you know, that's, that's a great city and county partnership that we can, you know, and that, those are, that's what we need to look at when we're looking at affordable housing.
Thanks, Kristen. I, I'm looking at the, I'm trying to look at the Q and A and I see, and Katie can help me with this, but I, I believe there's a question, a query from Shelley Cold Iron, who is involved with, well, she's the executive director of the Wolf Sanctuary. I think her question references that some fiber optic line was being laid up in the Glacier View Meadows, Red Feather Lake, you know, 74E Red Feather Lakes Road area. And my understanding of that, Shelley, is that Century Link, and we've had interesting interactions with Century Link, but they're the, the main providers up there and they've been laying that fiber optic line. And in terms of any specific questions you may have or any follow-up that you require to get more clarity on what the status of that is, I, I welcome you to email me or something or contact me. And we would follow up with our IT Director, Mark Pfaffinger, who's in close contact with the Century Link folks and could provide us with the most you know, up-to-date information about the, the fiber optic lines. I, I hope that's an adequate answer. And then I think there was something from Kevin Jones about the the sign code survey. And I don't know, Jody, did you respond to that? Is there were you able to answer his?
I, I just responded, I, I thought we, I put those surveys in, but I know they say they ended on February 8th, but I believe we asked at the planning commission meeting to Mr. Lafferty that both surveys stay open through the weekend, if not a little longer. So I just said, if they're having still trouble accessing it, we'll, you know, but it should, it should be accessible and still working, but, and they should be still taking that information. But if you have trouble, just reach out to us through our emails and we'll, we'll circle back with Mr. Lafferty and the planning commission staff and make sure that, you know, they're, they keep that open. Cause we do believe it was, I think that's what we had directed on, on Wednesday night, I believe.
Well, the, the, the oil and gas survey is open, I believe, till March 1.
Yeah.
And, and then the, the sign survey, like you said, Jody, I think they were going to extend it, you know, through the weekend, through Sunday or Monday. Yes.
Commissioner Kavales, there's another question up there from Shelley about some of the Century Link issues you mentioned. Do you want me to read it to you or do you want to follow up via email with her?
Why don't, just, why don't you share that, Katie? And if there's a way for me to respond at this time, otherwise, let's make sure that, you know, with your support, I, I can follow up.
Okay. It says also in Risk Canyon during the High Park Fire, a wireless tower was erected for communications at the peak of the canyon. And we had cell service for that brief period of time. After the High Park Fire, it was taken down. And we are left with shoddy wired service from Century Link. If the wired Century Link service goes down, we have no way to communicate with emergency services.
Thanks, Katie. I, I think I can offer a couple of helpful comments. You know, first of all, I know that I've received a few communications from folks in the Putter Canyon and directly related to the damage done to phone lines with the Cameron Peak Fire. You know, the folks up there, including the fire stations up the Putter Canyon have struggled with access to landline service and Century Link is the provider there. And, and so that, that's been going on for a few months. And then when these issues were brought to our attention in January, you know, we've been following up with Century Link. And, and for example, what we do know about Putter Canyon is that the Century Link is repairing those lines. They received all the, all the poles or whatever they need to get those repaired. And, and so that, that should be done by, certainly by the end of this month. So that's something for folks in the Putter Canyon to be aware of. And also I received a, an email the other, just the other day, I think, from the Putter Canyon Fire Protection District Chief Hugh Collins, indicating that at their fire station up there, they now have some, you know, wireless or Wi-Fi access. As far as Risk Canyon, the only thing I could say there is, I think this is a follow-up question, we can try to find out, find out more, but the what I've been suggesting to people, they need to, to reach out to Century Link directly. And, and I, I can give the information, if anyone is interested, to Shelley or anyone else, who the regional supervisor is, his name is Thomas Leet, I believe it is. And he's based out of Fort Collins. And, and there, there is an email and contact information. And I think frankly, you know, he's been responsive. He's the person that folks should be talking to directly about, you know, concerns that they might have up at Risk Canyon with the tower. And then our IT folks can also follow up.
Commissioner, would you like, can I share a couple of things for, and I know Katie's here, so Katie can kind of correct me if I'm wrong. I'd like to share a couple of updates I learned about yesterday with the vaccine distribution, if that's okay.
Yeah, yes, of course. You don't need to ask my permission. We're, we're all in this together. Please just, you know, go for it.
Well, it's your, your community conversation. I want to be respectful.
Actually, I just respectfully correct you in that is, it's our community conversation, including Katie O'Donnell, Bob Overveks, the three of you and the folks that are on the line. It's, it's, it's not mine. I'm.
So, and Katie, feel free to correct me because I had several meetings. There's a lot changing, as you know, with the vaccine distribution. And I want to thank again, our, our Public Health Department and the partners who are working so tirelessly. Not only are they setting up a process so that when we do get enough vaccines allocated to our county, we can as quickly as possible, vaccination as possible. There is a, a space out the ranch that has been set up and tested that we can vaccinate a lot of people at once. I think this week, yes, or Thursday, 2,000 people were vaccinated in Laramo County. And then on Tuesday, the ninth, the 1,100 older adults over the age of 70 were vaccinated. So it's great news. Lots of people in those categories, according to the vaccine distribution that are being vaccinated. We've had a lot of questions about how this works. And, you know, the state gets allocation from the federal government and that's been increasing since the middle of January with the change administration. So we're told we're getting about 16% increase in vaccines. And, and so I think it's gone up from about what, 80,000 to 90,000 this week. And the issue is, you know, trying to get enough to follow up with the second doses and then still have enough to start the first doses in there. So they're trying to coordinate all that. And hearing from other counties yesterday, it certainly is, you know, I feel very fortunate here in Laramo County that every back, every allocation we've gotten, we've got those shots in arms and that's due to the hard work and credit to the health department and our partners. So if, for those of you who are, if you have a friend or a neighbor or someone you know of that doesn't have internet access or have trouble accessing the system or have trouble with computers, especially your older adults, there's, and I don't know if Katie, you could share that, that link and stuff, but the number is 970-498-5500, where you can talk to a live person. I believe it's from eight to 4:30 or eight to four every day. And is that correct? Did I have that right?
Nine to 4:30.
Nine to 4:30. Yes, nine to 4:30. And you can get, and they'll help you get access into the system and you can get in that queue. So when a vaccine becomes available, they can pair you up with that. Now I've heard from, from some folks that there is some older adults might have trouble getting a ride to go get their, their vaccines. And so I'm very excited to share that. Starting next week, it's kind of not live yet. So this is kind of going to be shared. But for those of you who have trouble, when you do go in that system and you're, you're signing up with your healthcare partner, whether it be through the county's number or with your healthcare provider to sign up for a vaccine, if you have trouble, going to have trouble getting to your appointment to get your vaccine, please let that person who's helping you get access and into the system, let them know that you might need help with transportation, transportation, that transportation might be a barrier. And starting next week, this is kind of new, we have these mobility managers through the Northern Colorado Metropolitan Planning Organization that Kristen is our liaison and I'm the alternate for. And it's not live yet. So this is kind of brand new and they, they could kind of start talking about it. But you can let those people know. And there are some, it's some circumstances where they can get you a ride from a provider who will come pick you up safely and with proper protocols and get you to your appointment and back. So if you know folks who are having trouble accessing or having barriers such as that, please encourage them when they make those appointments or make those calls to let them, let those folks on the other line know that they're, they might need that extra assistance. And so I just wanted to kind of share that. Now that won't be available and accessible until the end of next week is going live. And I just want to kind of give everyone an update that that is something new. We want to make sure that we get our older adults in our community vaccinated. As I understand, we're about 57, 58% of adults over 70 that have been vaccinated, which is great. We'd love to have all 100% vaccinated. We've gotten through that first phase with our first responders and our frontline healthcare workers who work in the ICUs and then emergency rooms in the hospitals and then our long-term care facilities. And, and now we're starting to also have our teachers, a certain, a percentage of the allocation is going to vaccinate our teachers who are trying to stay in the classrooms and their systems in place to help teachers stay in classrooms and teaching through testing and with the vaccinations. And Katie, did I get that all, all those details? Cool. And so I just want to kind of give everybody that opportunity, especially sometimes we know more about our neighbors having a barrier to getting a vaccine than others. And so I wanted to make sure everyone knows there are options and I want to make sure everyone knows we're doing everything we can to get shots in arms and we want everyone safely vaccinated. And there's questions and concerns. There's a great amount of information on the Laramo County website. And they're doing a great job besides vaccination and the process and contact tracing and testing and the level up program for restaurants. They've, they've done so much work. And this last year, working tirelessly seven days a week. And I want to thank you and your whole team and everyone for just your tireless work, helping the, our public stay safe and healthy and well. So, thank you for letting me share that.
Kristen, is there anything you want to add? Because otherwise I'd like, I'd like to make sure we respond to Shelley's.
No, I'm fine. I think Jody covered it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavales, you're muted.
I'd like to respond very quickly to a query that Shelley had something to the effect that I'd like to respond very quickly to a query that Shelley had something to the effect that we are currently. You know, with the dial framework, which is another aspect of this that I'm sure Katie O'Donnell is quite familiar with. We are currently operating in a level yellow as it relates to businesses and, you know, in general. I mean, the public health protocols are still in place, what we need to be doing with everything. But we are currently in level yellow. I think that occurred as of January 6th for all or most of, many of the counties in Colorado. Based on the guidance from the governor, the state. And in order, I think the question was, will we be going to the next less restrictive level, which would be blue? And my understanding is that in order for that, well, first of all, our seven day metrics, you know, point us in that direction. But I, as I understand it, Katie and others, in order for the Larimer County to go to level blue. Statewide, we have to achieve that goal of, of 70% of the folk, 70 and older. Have to receive the, at least the initial, the first dose of the vaccination. And based on an update that I received from the governor who sends these out. I think we're at 71, it's all these, it's kind of confusing. But we're at 71% of reaching that 70% goal. Once the state achieves that 70% goal in terms of vaccinating folks, at least the first dose. And in Larimer County, if our seven day metrics dealing with hospitalizations, positivity rates and incidence rate per 100,000. Those are within the parameters of the thresholds, then I think we could go to level blue. Katie, you want to either adjust any of that or offer any, any further comments?
Yeah, so the, the biggest question we get kind of here in local public health is whether our level ups can operate out of yellow to blue. And to Commissioner Kofalas' point, they cannot until we've met the 70% vaccinated for our 70 plus group. Our metrics aren't quite at blue yet. And we have seen and expect to see a little bit of a case surge after Super Bowl weekend that we won't see probably until next week. So I think we're just kind of sitting tight and seeing where we will end up as far as our metrics go. Our positivity rate has come way down, which is great for us. Our cases continue to go up and down a little bit. The good news is our hospitalizations have continued to stay low and that's something we're always watching. So I think we're not quite at the place where the whole county could move to blue for a while yet. But the level up program, if, if we made that 70% across the state and to Commissioner Kofalas' comment. It, it is a little confusing and the data does change. So we're doing our part to get our 70 plusers vaccinated as fast as we possibly can, as much as we have vaccine available. But it is a statewide goal for us to all get to that 70% before we could level up to the next phase.
I put that document in the chat.
Great, thank you, thank you both. And yeah, you know, we're, I think we're continuing to move in a good direction. But I had forgotten about the potential for a Super Bowl related surge. But, but overall, I think the residents of Larimer County are, you know, doing their best to, you know, follow the guidelines. And, and we're not quite yet there. My hope is that at least come summertime, that, that, that we can resume our La Porte community conversations at Meow My Bakery. And, and that we can resume our Fort Collins community conversations at the, the coffee shop, the Dazbog on Cherry and Masons. So if we, you know, continue to, you know, to do our due diligence, I think we'll continue to move in that direction. Are there other, Katie or anyone other questions or comments or?
Everything in the chat and I do not see any hands raised right now.
So I, I think in light of what I mentioned earlier, and certainly if Kristin and Jody or Bob want to say anything in closing. We'll begin to wrap up and, and again, our goal here was to provide you with information about the Cameron Peak Fire and the damage assessment report, the work that the assessor is doing. And ultimately that's going to help folks who have lost their homes, you know, in terms of getting a break on their, on their rebate or a credit, you know, towards their property taxes. And that's really important. And that was as a result of state legislation back in the day. And then our goal was to give you an up, high level update on some of the key issues that we're going to be focusing on in 2021. Oil and gas, you know, other aspects of the Phase 2 land use code. And especially dealing with housing and development standards as well. An update on the strategic plan, the three of us are working on. So those are some of the key issues and we'll continue to work on the capital improvement stuff. So there's a lot of progress, we had a groundbreaking on the behavioral health facility in December. We're working on implementing the ranch master plan, implement in terms of redesigning and building that out. And there's a number of other projects that are underway. So I want to make sure that folks know if you have suggestions for next time. You know, if someone would like us to invite a subject matter expert, please let me know. And we'll, we'll try to accommodate that. But in the meantime, I will stop and I'll say thank you. But Kristin, Jody, Bob, you guys want to say anything else?
Actually, just wanted to thank everybody for coming out this morning and thank you for, for Bob, to Bob Overbeck for the, the great presentation. And very impressed by the work that your group is doing. Ditto with Katie, like, you know, we have a lot of groups in the county that because of our, our different, you know, emergency situations are on overtime almost all the time. And so we're just really grateful for that work. And then just wanted to just briefly mention that, you know, with, with some of the fire situation, we are hoping that we'll get some FEMA dollars in that will help with some of this debris removal on public lands and getting some of these trees down that are, that are in danger of, you know, blocking roads. And, and getting some work done before fire season hits again, frankly. So we're, we're looking at those federal dollars to come in and then there will be, you know, depending on what the, the. Bills look like at the federal level, we may be getting some more dollars into our community for, you know, for issues like eviction protection, food insecurity. So we already have seen some dollars that we're expecting to come in for this eviction protection. And so that's millions of dollars that will go towards that and working with our partners and neighbor to neighbor who's done a great, who have done a great job with eviction protection thus far. And so with additional stimulus dollars, you know, we, we will, we, we got some percentages, we're not sure how much money we're getting yet. It looks like they pulled those numbers back and they, they have to retool those. But we, we hope to be getting more dollars into the community, also for economic health. And we know businesses are struggling and folks are struggling. So just so you know, we're all aware of that and that's, you know, we have that in mind as we make our decisions. And that we, we hope to see some more of these federal dollars and we will put them to good use to, to make sure that both, excuse me, businesses and individuals are, you know, that we're, we're keeping people afloat during this difficult time. So thank you.
Thanks Kristin, Bob, you, oh, Jody, and I want to make sure if Bob wants to say anything too.
I just wanted to thank Assessor Overbeck, Bob and Katie for being here today. As always, you guys are doing great work and great presentations. And I'm really grateful for all of us having such a great collaborative working relationships and really proud and excited of the work that you're all doing. And thanks Commissioner for having this conversation. And thank you to everyone for participating today and engaging. And please share all this great information with your friends and neighbors. And I'm sure I'd speak for all of us, please reach out to us at any time, be it email or our phone numbers on our, on the website for our offices. And we're always accessible and available for you to see where we can answer questions and help you out. So have a great weekend, holiday weekend and happy Valentine's Day, thank you.
Bob, what do you want to say?
I, I just want to thank you Commissioners for, for all the updates for your first 30 days here as, as a board. And, and also just to let everybody know, you know, we're here at the assessor's office here to help you in part of the recovery. So feel free to reach out again to my office if you have any questions. And we will be providing more updates as they become available. And thank you and have a great day.
Folks, before we sign off, I guess I could, I lied, I get the last word. But I wanted to mention, well, I think there was some input on the next meeting from Shelley regarding having maybe fire department chiefs come in and give us their take on what the fire season might look like. I think related to that, we can certainly reach out to some of it, like the Risk Canyon Volunteer Fire Protection District or the Pooter Canyon folks or the, or the Red Feather Lakes folks. We can certainly reach out to them, but I will also reach out to Lori Hodges from our, the director of our Office of Emergency Management. She can, in a month, she can give a much, a really detailed update on where we're at with debris removal issues, where we're at with. As Kristin and others noted, we did receive, we were approved for a major disaster declaration, January 15th from FEMA and the president, the former, I guess the former president. And, and that meant that we were able to access Public Assistance Program dollars and something called hazard mitigation. And we're working on Small Business Administration disaster declaration that would help some of the businesses. So I will, I will follow up with the fire chief idea and certainly see if Lori Hodges or somebody from her staff is available. Also, I wanted to mention with the strategic plan and the goal stuff, I think with goal number one, the, the next update on that, we get these quarterly updates. And I think that's scheduled for, again, that's the infrastructure one and that's Jody's, I got that's right for now. That's scheduled for February 22nd. So you might want to look on the Commissioner's calendar if you want to listen in on some updates on infrastructure, transportation, broadband, whatever. That'll be an opportunity and I'm not quite sure when we've scheduled an update on goal number three. And maybe Jody knows, but otherwise I wanted to share that with you. We'll follow up on the suggestion from Shelley and I just hope you all have a wonderful day. And Katie O'Donnell, thanks, thanks Bob, Kristin, Jody, I guess we're done. Bye.
Bye everyone, thank you.